Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's pretty close to seven o'clock as we call the meeting to order. If anyone's recording, would they please make it known? Thank you. First on the agenda is to meet a prospective member of the planning board, Robert Reed. Could you come forward, please?
I do.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think you're known to some members of the board, but if you could just give us a brief introduction.
Sure. I was a former member of the planning board in Pembroke for about nine years until the kids got to be school age. It took a little time, but I was there until '82 to '91. I've been in, actually started coming down to Wareham in, well, not a date myself, but about 1950, just in the summer. And we moved down here full-time about seven or eight years ago. I've been here ever since. And I enjoyed the time I spent on the planning board. And now that I'm semi-retired and the kids are long gone, sort of long gone, it'd be nice to do it again if I could.
Gee, we just had somebody from Pembroke looking to buy property here. I wanted to look at their bylaws. Questions, board?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The board will make a recommendation to the Appointing Authority, which is the moderator, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and myself. And we'll be scheduled for a, to come before the Appointing Authority. And we'll schedule that.
Good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Minutes of September 8th.
Is he a kayak guy?
No. Not even.
He's a boater.
Does he fish?
We discussed that correction of-
Yeah.
Has not been completed. Was there anything else? It doesn't-
I don't-
Am I missing something? It doesn't show the votes on them.
On which?
On the modification for Charlotte Furnas Road.
Right.
Or the, have we voted on 72 minus F?
Gee, and call over. We did vote to contact the zoning board of appeals and tell them that we thought the uses seemed appropriate.
Yeah, we didn't vote on that. Board supported the project.
Yeah.
So we said.
Right. Say it again. Dave, I'm sure.
So, looking for a motion to approve is corrected?
Motion to approve minutes with corrections as needed.
Forgot to say, Michael, are you keeping track of our little actions like last time? You got a motion? Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed. October meeting scheduled. I had the planner here. What did I do with it? Oh, there it is. It's hiding. As I mentioned last meeting.
I forgot town meeting for whatever need right.
We have Columbus Day on our first meeting and town meeting on our second meeting. So I know we talked briefly about meeting the 6th and the 20th. Does that work for everyone?
Let's see, yes. Got it right?
I don't know if we need to vote on that.
I'm fine for those dates.
Next is set the public hearing date for Articles 34 and 36 for the fall town meeting. Dave would like, as recommended, October 20th. I may have the articles mixed up, but one of them is the street acceptance, which is a citizen's petition to get the streets accepted, Lynn Road and Bechant Road. And the other is-
Mr. Chris is probably-
Oh. Another citizen's petition to allow a gas station within 1,500 feet of a major roadway, I think is how it's written, but I'm not sure. I haven't read it yet.
I think it's a change in zoning, is that commercial general? To allow, to a service station within 700 feet of major, intersection of major highway. Who wrote the moratorium?
Not a service station, because a service station is allowed by special permit, but a filling station for gas, diesel, propane, fuel oil, it's a different category, which is a no.
Okay. I think maybe I thought they were on such a way that we were allowed to go through the ZBA. I think it says for special permit in the article.
Motion to set the public hearing dates for those articles for October 20th?
So, Mabe?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is a discussion on the Beaver Meadows request for acceptance of Lynn Road. I was told someone would be here to discuss that. I think all the mics are on, so-
I can choose whichever one I'd like.
Right.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Diane Murphy. I live at 7 Bechant Way. And I am one of three trustees of the Beaver Meadows Homeowners Association. Regretfully, the other two trustees were not able to be here tonight. One is under cancer treatment and the other is working this evening, so I'm all you get. I'm here to request that the town planning board accept the layout plan of Lynn Road and Bechant Way that we delivered to the planning department on September 10th, 2014, with a request letter. And we further request that the road inspection be completed prior to the October 27th, 2014 town meeting with the understanding that Beaver Meadows Homeowners Association will pay the required fee. I don't know if you know much about the Beaver Meadow Homeowners Association. It's a cluster development with a homeowners association trust. And it was, the trust was registered with the Registry of Deeds on May 18th, 2004. But prior to that, a layout plan was completed for procure of realty with the developers of our neighborhood. And that was done on October 3rd, 2003. Copies of that plan was presented to the town clerk on December 2nd, 2013, in conjunction with our request to have our streets accepted by the town. On May 18th, 2000, I'm sorry, November 15th, 2006, an ad-built roadway and profile plan was done for Bill Bechant, who was the developer of our neighborhood, in order to have the streets paved. And all of us living in the development expected that the town would accept the streets once the paving had been completed. In fact, we were told that. That didn't happen, and we've been attempting to get the town to accept the streets since that time. So on September 9th, J.C. Engineering Incorporated completed the meets and bounds for filing with the planning board. And that was submitted to the planning department on September 10th this year. So I am here to request that you accept our streets. Lynn Road and Bechant Way is a diverse neighborhood. We're a very cohesive neighborhood, neighbors helping neighbors. We work together to keep the neighborhood clean and neat. We watch out for each other's children. We have town water and sewage. We have U.S. postal delivery to our homes. School buses pick up our children in the neighborhood. We're all registered voters and good citizens of Wareham. And the Board of Selectmen this past spring voted unanimously to let our request for acceptance go forward. So I'm here in the next step in that process. Are there any questions that you have for me?
Well, the next step in that process was an estimate from the town engineer was prepared for his review and inspection of the roadway. Did that get to you or to the homeowners association?
No, it did not.
Because that seemed to be what stopped the process, so to speak, is that that review and report didn't get done because there was no- and I want to say the estimate was $500, but I'd have to recheck with the engineer.
We fully expect to pay that fee. And I guess there's a question of who will do the inspection?
No, we'll have our consulting engineer, Charles Rowley, do the inspection. But that's what held it up in the spring, was that estimate was prepared and apparently it didn't get to the homeowners association.
I don't recall seeing anything of that nature.
What'll happen, he'll review your road acceptance plan to make sure it's complete. And he will do a physical inspection of the roadway and the drainage system to see if it's all in good repair and working properly. And he'll prepare a report of any deficiencies he finds. And, you know, those will have to be corrected before you get a positive recommendation. I did drive through there last weekend and look around. To me, everything looks to be in pretty good shape. There's a little cracking here and there, but I don't know.
Do you have a red pickup truck by any chance?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's a blue one.
Someone said there was a red pickup truck that was looking along the sightlines or something.
But that and the drainage structures, and I don't know if the acceptance plan, just what exactly the town was accepting. So, you know, he'd review that plan and give us a report on it. And if everything is fine, then we can give a positive report at town meeting.
Okay. When could we expect that inspection to be done? And when do you expect payment for it?
Well, I would say as soon as you can, you know, make the deposit with, in the planning department, then Charlie will go ahead and get it done.
I can have that, have the check mailed tomorrow.
Okay.
And who should it be made out to?
You can, Michael Baptiste? Town of Wareham.
Town of Wareham.
And if you send that to the planning department, Dave will know what it's for. If you want, I can just double-check the estimate in case it's one way or the other before you send it.
All right. So we'll mail a check tomorrow for $500. And then if there is some reason that it's not sufficient, then you'll let us know?
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And if it's too much, we'll give you a refund.
All right, nice.
And then it can go forward.
Wonderful.
I didn't, as I said, I only saw a little bit of cracking around one of the manhole covers toward the end, what's the, one going in is Lynn Way, right? One going straight in.
Lynn Road goes off of Swiss Beach Road and then Bechant Way goes off to the left. They're both cul-de-sacs.
If that gets done and we get this all wrapped up before town meeting in a positive way, then... I don't know if you saw any of the selectmen's meeting, was it a week ago? Even though there is a citizen's petition requesting this, the selectmen still have the ultimate say whether it gets accepted or not, but-
There was a little misinformation, confusion that happened with that. My apologies if that created any difficulties, but hopefully we can move forward from there.
But I guess that's all that needs to happen.
Okay, we'll get that check mailed out tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
We have a discussion on Beaver Path Homeowners Association. I did talk with Bill this afternoon by phone. He just wants to know if there's any, you know, what he needs to do to close out the the process and get his security deposit back, so to speak. He's talked with his counsel, and yes, the homeowners association didn't get put on the deeds. They're looking at ways to address that. My suggestion to him was to move forward with street acceptance. If everything is good, there isn't really a need for the homeowners association once you've had it accepted.
There are no retention areas, detention areas?
There are detention areas. He had to make some remedial repairs to those.
That's what the homeowners association's for.
That's right.
So without-
Well, it depends on how they, how it's accepted by the town. If they take possession of the-
How were the original approvals given from the planning board? If it said that there had to be a homeowners association and that they would be responsible for those areas, then-
I think it's worded they'll be responsible until such time as it's taken over by the town.
Okay, I would suggest then that his counsel-
I'd have to recheck if that one, is that specific verbiage?
He should have his counsel look at that, because that would certainly take care of that problem for him.
We had one developer actually create a homeowners association as a corporation registered with the Secretary of State. I don't know if that's an option to him or not, but that's for his counsel to figure out.
Between that and, wasn't that this neighborhood with the trouble with the street lights?
Yeah, they have the solar lights. So that's, he's wondering if, you know, if there's a possibility for partial release or...
Never have.
I didn't think it would be very promising, but I-
No.
No, with his track record.
All right. Next up for discussion is the S&amp;H Realty Plan, also known as the Walmart Outpostal. As you know, we conditioned it that they achieve a modification of the Walmart permit. And this has been an ongoing exercise with the Board of Appeals. I attended a couple of meetings, including the last one. And I was so confused, and I got to say embarrassed by the behavior of the Board of Appeals Acting Chair, that I felt strongly enough to seek, I told Alan I was going to seek town council with the board's permission. And he told me to go ahead and talk to John Witten. I was asking John if there was any way we could remove that condition. He instructed me that we couldn't, but the applicant could request it. The Board of Appeals, we seem to be on a track to approve the modification. This last meeting set us back like six months. It was just-
Why?
Well, Ken wasn't there, and I think Ken led a, gave a measure of stability in the process, but, I mean, Boulder Engineering, they left confused. Walmart's attorneys left confused. Mr. Robertson left enraged. It was, it was not pretty. And there doesn't seem to be any end to, light at the end of the tunnel as to them approving this modification without reopening the whole site plan for S&amp;H Realty. So Walmart's people left with, okay, we'll just build ours now and they can, they can start when they're done. And we tried to be cooperative with this because we work together on the Walmart project, but I just don't see it happening. It's four driveways.
What are their, yeah, what are their concerns?
Well, I talked to Mike privately, and he thinks it could be resolved if we just put better screening around the backs of the buildings, reduce the parking further, and put landscaping in front of the buildings, which reminded them, all these buildings have to come back. Once they have an actual building to put up, they have to come back for-
Review?
I left there baffled. I couldn't, you know, it's one thing to have somebody before you. I mean, you usually try to give them guidance as to what direction you want to go in, but it was, it was like, you know, I'll tell you this now, but it might be something new when you come back, which was literally what was said. We need a traffic study tonight, but if you come back next time, it might be something else.
So what was Witten's recommendation?
He said we could remove that condition at the request of the applicant. And as you see, there is a written request.
That's what we had. So if we do that, it's-
We do that, Walmart continues to build. When they're all done, probably before they break ground, they've got a site plan and strip commercial that can stand on its own.
So could we ask Attorney Witten to review this and give us his final thought? And then vote on it as-
If you like, if you want. Want me to send that out to him?
I want to know what else we could do to help the applicant.
Let's see, there were, I was there for, I think, four, three or four other people. And I know, I think the only one that left there moderately happy was Marion. Everybody else was-
Confused.
Treated somewhat badly. And I think, I think Mr. Robertson would agree on being kind.
And it strictly revolves around the four openings.
That's all that needs to be modified. That's all they were asking for.
I thought that they were asking for landscaping modifications as well. But you addressed all those, right?
Yes, we went through your pair review.
Yeah.
At a previous meeting, they'd asked that Walmart's engineers meet with their engineers, and they agree, and Walmart come in and ask for modification. And that's what took place.
Right.
And it was like starting all over again.
Say what? I'd like Attorney Witten just to give us his thought to see if this is-
Yeah, I can forward that up.
Correct and acceptable, and then we could move from there, right? If that's okay. Could we have that, you think, response back from Attorney Witten for our next meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Is that good?
Sure, I mean, our position is pretty much outlined in Scott's letter.
I think we should try to keep this moving forward. Certainly, the applicant's done what's been requested of our board.
Mike, it really started out quite differently. It started out with an informal meeting with the ZBA. We agreed. And then it was just events cascading downward badly. And the last episode was when Walmart's engineer said, "All right, let's focus on the issue." What is the issue? And it was stated that the issue was the traffic. But we'd done three traffic studies for the project. This was going to be an additional one. And then when Mr. Smith said, "Okay, then we'll come back with a revised traffic, and then we'll be okay." And he said, "Oh, no, no, there's four pages of things." And he allude, alluding that you could come back until the cows come home. And as far as the attorney, the suggestion was to do it this way. And are we just talking to him again to see that it is okay? I thought the opinion was that if the applicant applied, you could make that decision. So I'm asking for a decision.
I don't, I wasn't at the meeting, but I believe there was an informal meeting with this board to discuss exactly this, the minor modifications. So that, I don't believe I was there. I think that's pretty much what we're looking for. It falls solely within the planning board jurisdiction. These are issues that were looked at and examined and evaluated by all of you.
We said that from day one.
Yeah.
From day one.
Yeah, so I guess if you want to send it back to Attorney Witten, I'm not going to object to that. But the more time goes on, the more mess this creates, I would say. I would, I would like it if you could do it today. If you can't, then I understand.
Would you like it to make a motion and make it an approval of town council?
I'm fine with that.
If we do that, we sure, they don't-
Contingent upon town council approval?
And this is strictly referencing the four openings.
Well, that specific condition requires them to get a modification from the Walmart.
Right, but it's in reference to that meeting we had recently where the Walmart representative came in and talked about just the four openings. Wanted to make sure that we understood where they were, the dimensions, and the changes required.
Correct.
That's the only item on this.
Well, it's item 11 in your decision, which talks about landscaping, access, and grading.
Right.
So it would encompass those three things, which I think have all been covered. But that would be our request.
Request to modify the site plan to reflect landscaping, access, and grading. Not, not in general, just-
Yeah, no, I don't, we're not making- Yeah, no, I don't, we're not making any substantive changes whatsoever. We'd like to, the elimination of condition number eleven. But I guess it's our thought that this board has already looked at those issues and weighed in. And I think your decision reflects what we intend to do there. So if we can eliminate condition number eleven, that will clear the decks for us.
So is there a motion to remove condition number eleven pending...
Accepted.
Review of Town Council?
Yeah, review and approval by Town Council?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I had, I had another question, which is in the event that Town Council's okay with that, procedurally, will a new decision issue then? Eliminating condition number eleven?
Yeah, I would say we probably just issue an addendum to that. Site plan approval, I would think, and just file for Town Council.
Okay, and my other question is, assuming that that passes muster with Town Council, a condition that while I have everyone's attention, a condition in the decision will be that S&amp;H Realty meet with the plant, a planning board representative and an arborist before they clear trees. Procedurally, who are we talking to? Who do you plan on hiring? In that next step, just, we're looking for some guidance.
Well, you haven't identified where the islands are physically gonna be located, right?
No, I believe...
Yeah, they, pretty much...
Well, on the plan, but not on the ground.
Not on the ground. But we, we did show on our L1 plan, trees that had been selected to save and those that were not to be saved. And I think we're gonna go over it with the arborist and your representative as to what do you think of those? And do they fit and will they stand?
Alright, I will, I'll talk with Dave and Callie and see if we can find somebody else.
Yeah.
I know some of the trees proposed were the pine trees that are up there. I don't think that's practical.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it is either.
We'll let them take a look at it.
And could you notify either, either Mr. Robertson or myself on issuance of the decision? I don't think we got notice of the one that previously...
We, we can do it through the vice chair of the Board of Appeals if you would like.
I appreciate that.
Well, I'm sure you're probably years jumping up in town. Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll...
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That makes sense, right?
Thank you.
There was a couple, I had a... I figured out if they could put a state on it. And when they left there, they were...
I don't think so.
They're not even interested in looking at property.
Why?
I don't have you on the agenda. Is it, you just dropped off plans? You said the latest...
Updated plans. Perfect.
And I just received this from Mike Beck's, of the lateral.
Is that him, Grill?
Yeah. He just came today, so...
Shame on him for being opposed to a black hole.
I'm sorry, Mike, I moved here wrong. Yeah, can you, where you...
No, I'm fine. I'm just, I'm making a note, so...
Oops, sorry. Hope you don't have headphones on when I do that.
They moved the island, okay?
Yeah.
They were gonna show lighting.
Yeah.
You go back to the last one.
Yeah.
One more, one more. One more?
Can you get your...
The arrows are right, the island's gone.
Yeah.
Lights are right.
Showing the sign. And, and the engineer certified that he believes it's in a safe location for you? Yeah? Perfect. Yeah, and then the only other thing was the lighting study you were looking at, which... And John, from J, he thought it was all good?
Where's the light here?
There isn't.
But this area here and this area here, he's showing it as illuminated, but I don't see the light.
We're gonna see, put a note in, have the latest and greatest case of roughing. But, uh, just put a note there that will give you the latest and greatest once it's completed.
I don't, I don't see what he's telling us.
Oops, I think...
See, every time you s, I see a circle...
The screege line, yeah, see the, the dock line is the original line, and the screege line is the line that was taken out.
Right.
And so maybe the dock line...
But...
Right, you, you can, you can read, you can read here, the lighter, you can see the intensity.
Yeah.
It's increased when you're close to the light as it goes out.
Right.
Okay, so it's coming here. What Mike's looking for, what it is, you're gonna get it right.
These aren't overlapping.
Because of the, the company will bring, will, will give us how latest and greatest as soon as they're done with it.
Oh, he didn't, he didn't give us any information.
Yeah, he just showed us those change, you have the lights.
Right.
Now the company that does that, which should be pretty similar, just waiting.
We're gonna want that from a, an engineer of some nature that will certify and stamp...
Yeah, he has to give some...
They just sort of, they just sort of, uh...
Cause they have to show this light that you moved, you know, coming out.
Does it's doing it now.
Yeah, yeah, alright.
They did a fudge copy, that's what he did. He just grabbed the shadows and moved them.
Right, right.
Just transposed them, that's all.
I would say it still shows the lights on the islands. That you put a little sort of...
Right.
Well, what's, what's, what's gonna happen?
As he's saying here, he didn't do anything with it other than move, move a couple of the lights, so...
By using the shadow patterns that he has, he's gonna show, what's gonna show is gonna have a dead area in the middle.
Right now.
Yeah.
We need to wait until you get something from an engineer.
I'm more concerned about the light spilling onto the neighbors' houses there.
We had to, we had to shut them all off. They're just way too bright.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
We closed at six, so eight o'clock I think is where we're about to shut them off. Get everybody out. They were about, even people hanging on back. Still bicycles already.
Oh, yeah, that's...
Well, Jay's not on the street at night anymore.
So...
Is there any details in reference to the sign? I mean, at the back showing de, design and elevations?
Uh, David's here last time we were here.
Yeah. I don't see... Light sign, island, and arrows. Where's the sign? Now, where is it?
Show them all the page?
I don't, well, it's not there, so hopefully he's giving us some detail somewhere. Not there. Where is? He would reference it though. Can you just pick up the mic, see if... Hey man, is...
Did you submit the signs and rules, that you see, combined with...
No.
To sign by... Do you have a question or wish? What was it, right?
Right, elevation.
Clear it from the ground to the bottom of the sign.
Do you want us to keep it up to the...
Yeah.
That's it, I think, um, so we're still waiting for more detailed information on the sign and on the lighting. I don't, I mean, he didn't do anything.
He's put it on.
I mean, he gave you the, he gave you the design, right, John?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So just ask him to...
Marry it into the...
Yeah, put it on, he has to put it on the last page to show us what he's proposing. And then he has to locate it here, and he has to move around that island a little bit for you. I think...
I'll check on that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Show that sign's showing.
Yeah, and then when will you get the information from the lighting contractor?
Are you hoping you'll have it today? I think it's...
Nothing yet.
So, Sean, you wasted a lot of paper.
He wrote it, but he didn't do anything. At least that we see. Maybe, maybe there's a separate sheet? And he just forgot it?
I can't see, maybe you're on the...
Right.
So do we have to come back to you?
Well...
Or, I mean, does everything have to be done by the end of the week? I'll go get extension.
It's not, it's not too much, so...
I think that day was the twenty-eighth, right? That's when your temporary expires? How are you, we have the agenda, it's...
So do I get an extension till the sixth, or how does that work?
Don't look at me.
I'm looking at Alan.
Yeah, good.
I'll check with Dave and see what he wants to do. Is it Dave more? When's he in, you know?
I think he's in a couple days a week. He was in Monday.
You don't know which days?
I'm not positive. Maybe Monday, Wednesday, Friday. He's only in three days. Actually, cold and forced, so...
Yeah, he'd be the one to sign it off on your site plan. So I'll talk to him, see what he wants to do.
He'd sign off on the sign, too.
Right.
Yeah, get the signs squared away, make sure that...
That's right. Try to get that information from John, over to him, so that he, cause if he can give us something that he's looked at and approves it, that takes that off the table for us.
Yeah, cause if you're going to take the permit for the sign and they say it doesn't... Well, you said, you gotta go to Board of Appeals.
Yeah, so I would say, bring the sign information to him as soon as possible. So he can give us something so that we know that that's in good shape. And then the lighting, as soon as you can get something from an engineer showing that.
Appreciate it.
It's only a...
Do you want me to forward the letter over to Witten? Do you wanna do it?
Forward the letter to, oh, if you got time, that'd be great.
You are relatives?
As to this other correspondence, it says it's... You can't challenge it, and it has to be done within thirty days.
Yeah, so what are you talking about?
Um, Department of Transportation has ruled on the change of Wong Kinko Ave to Oceanside.
The question is, well, I'm trying to get an answer from Rich, I haven't got it yet, whether it's the board of selectmen on this one, planning board, arborist commissions. It used to be the planning board all the time. Well, that was a political football that went back and forth for the last ten years. If, if the planning board made a decision or made a name change that somebody didn't like, all you have to do is call somebody and put a selectman in the upper room of the planning board.
Well, that only happened once, twice.
Well, when was the other one?
Uh, Spectacle Pond Terrace, Spectacle Pond Road.
What happened then?
Uh, it ended, ended up staying Spectacle Pond Terrace and Spectacle Pond Road. That, that was a bad field of, yeah, can, can you mind us, we see that? It was, uh, it might be something with private and public road also. Cause I don't think the road commissioners can rule on a private road, public road, should be private road.
Well, it's, it seems like municipal maintenance just has to be directed to change the sign and the...
Yeah, that's what...
Applicants need to know, I mean, the residents need to know to change their addresses.
Yeah, that's what my, uh...
That's the worst part, you know?
Well, it was changed the first time at the direction of the selectmen against the planning board's wishes, so I think they should take the ball again.
Yeah, and yes. No. Yeah, you didn't get real... Public Ways and Works, the highway department, the signs and stuff, it's all listed under them.
Well, when the road commissioners were created, when the Board of Road, were they given any express powers or just the statutory ones?
Powers and duties. The Board of Road Commissioners shall act in accordance with the powers enumerated in chapter forty, master law, section twenty-two. And as such, shall conduct period review of public ways. Shall make rules and orders for all traffic policies, including speed limits, traffic control signs, regulation of heavy commercial vehicles, traffic and parking regulations, penalties and repeals. Insofar as these rules and orders are the same as the regulations, rules and orders now enforced in a where hand, municipal traffic code, they shall be deemed to be a continuation thereof. The Board shall furthermore assume the responsibility of street marking and house numbering. Street marking is, is that marking the street or naming the street?
Right.
Naming.
As I said, in the, in the previous legal opinion, it said the power rested with the planning board. But I think the creation of the road commissioners...
Chipped, chipped that power over. Yeah, so therefore the road commissioner should be the one to take care of this.
Isn't that the selectmen?
No, only more.
Who are the road commissioners now?
We have actually the police chief, uh, town planner, director of municipal maintenance, and four at large numbers. We only have three right now. Yeah, stop sign on Toby Road should be directed to them also.
Well, we did, that was part of Walmart's site plan, that three-way stop, if you remember. And I did see the letter from Chief Walsh with his objections and... I didn't find those, cause I was in there in good weather, but, you know, visibility and queuing and...
I thought that they were gonna only have two stop signs at that intersection. Or they have them three because of that little road that goes down to the factory.
Smellless.
Is that the third stop sign?
No, the third, the third stop sign is, it's one on Toby Road and one on both ways on Main Street. And the concern is the one coming out from under the bridge is shielded by the bridge and... And the concern is the one coming out from under the bridge is shielded by the bridge and-
Right.
It will surprise people.
You can't see it there on top of it.
I, I went through there a couple of times since I read the letter. I find the visibility okay, but I, I'm used to that bridge.
You're used to it, yeah.
You know, you know, he's concerned about maybe landscape trailers being around the corner and-
Yeah.
And I, I've gone through there probably half a dozen times since I put it there. The first time it caught me almost off guard, and I've seen probably a third of the people drive right through, cause they're unaware of it.
Well, it takes time. They do the same when they put the three-way on Top Lincoln Hill.
And on the hill, yeah.
And when they put the stop sign on the hill next to me, you know, people still go through those.
Yeah.
It's a good fundraiser if the police wanna sit there and watch.
Once in a while, they'll sit there. Keep country rolling stops.
But that was, that's what, that's about his concern, that somebody will come out from the bridge and traffic will be queued up.
So, the way you should handle it though is handled as a recommendation to the road commissioners to modify and take that sign away.
Well, once again, that's a condition in Walmart's approval, so they'll have to adapt, adjust Walmart's approval. I don't get those sidewalks nowhere either.
No.
Have you been down there?
No.
He'll have concrete sidewalk, curb, concrete sidewalk, ADA ramp, and nothing else, grass. It doesn't go anywhere.
When, when, when the mall came, they were gonna sidewalk it if we wanted to, and, um, Mrs. Medina was the principal at the time, was highly recommended. They didn't, they didn't want encouraged sidewalks-
Right.
down by the school, so that's why there was no sidewalks to put there. Before Walmart came, part of that, when they redid their intersection, was clean up the intersection, but sidewalks weren't really spoken of.
Hmm.
And all of a sudden they come up with their little-
I don't remember that being part of the discussion.
Bumps. I think they had some extra curb area.
I remember we talked about the stop signs, but we didn't encourage any sidewalks.
Yeah. Right, no, I, I was gonna say, I remember the sidewalk conversation.
Fixing Toby Road would be more important than sidewalks.
Well, yeah.
You know, that's almost as bad as the bike path going to the, to Walmart. Maybe that's what's, that's in lieu of the bike path coming. Anyway, that's about it, huh?
So, we're gonna, I have to make a note. What am I making a note about?
I was just discussing the, the, uh, filling you in on the complaint that they've got about the stop signs, so. I don't think it's, I don't think it's our action to take, but if the road commissioners decide that's unsafe-
Well, the, the thi- the thing is-
I think it needs more time for people to understand.
Right, if, if, if we, in, if our site plan, or, or we put a site plan and say we, we should recommend it or we wanna stop signs in there, if they have to be modified later on, that recommendation should be forwarded to whoever, which is now the road commissioners, and whether the modification should be changed, should be changed to them, not for us.
Right.
Pass the buck.
Do we need to talk about the applicant?
Probably good, but, you know.
I mean, I can answer questions if you have any questions.
I need a recommendation, uh, say he's been a planning board number in another town. I think you said he's a son attorney?
He's an attorney, has been for forty-five years.
It's his discipline.
Real estate.
The other town gave a positive recommendation.
Yep, there might be a, definitely assets to the plan, but.
He, he's very, um-
Does he fish?
I don't think so, but he's a great boater. I mean, a great boater. Can drive anything, if that's important. Is that part of the problem? Yeah, I mean, the process?
Well, would you let him, would you let him drive your boat?
Oh, God.
No problem?
I'd beg him to.
So, no, it's-
So, I don't have to.
Alan, Alan, I would be off the back plugging for them.
Loose.
He can run the boat.
And he can run the boat right into the school of fish. Sounds good.
No, you don't run it straight in.
Well, you know, screw around.
You're one of those.
So, um-
That used to bug me, you'd be working up a school of boaters and somebody would drive right through the middle of it.
He's a, he's a good guy, he's conscientious, he's quiet, he's a quiet man. I can tell you, he's not a-
He doesn't get emotional?
No, no, no. And I, you know, of course I I asked him if he'd be interested. He's done r- real estate for me for fifteen, twenty years and does a very nice job. Very, um, diligent, checks everything.
So, am I hearing a motion to recommend his appointment?
Well, I would recommend him, but I don't think I should, cause I was the one that asked him if he would be interested. I just wanna make sure that you're both comfortable.
I think that speaks for itself. That, that's a recommendation, that's, that's a vote.
He's- That's good to me, Mike. He's a good guy.
Oh, was it favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey, one more thing, I got a question.
You're still on?
Well, I, I, I hope it's on the record. Uh, when, when is this town gonna start, uh, getting some of the rewards on earth removal in this town?
Rewards?
Yeah.
The only one thing we have is Pennsylvania.
Let's make these, gonna s- apply for earth removal from there. Where? We have a half a million yards that's, uh, as we talked now, is being disposed of out of the town.
Is that the solar project?
Yeah, then trucks are going out of there every day.
But they told us that that, that fill is gonna be-
No, no. They, they, they said that from day one, from Charlotte Princess Road, which was a fallacy. They're removing soil out of this town every single day, and they pay nothing. I don't think that's right.
Should I complain to the billies, Mike? Could it start somewhere?
But didn't they tell us that they were gonna use that fill all the, on their own property?
They were gonna start on s- on their own property and use it on their own-
And use it for their own projects?
Somebody should, somebody should tell some of these trucks that are leaving the site. Yeah? I, I don't, I don't think it's right, because, um, you know, if, everybody else-
No, I understand, but you got, someone's gonna s- make a complaint. You just can't.
Now, is that, is that a policy or is that a bylaw that is an agricultural exception?
So, who, who can monitor?
It really says on, on soil removal, it has a s- set of rules and regulations around the town. Plus, plus there's an agreement made for the solar field, it's gonna outlast.
I was gonna say, if they're-
But I'm told in other towns they pay, and they don't stockpile it.
Oh.
Oh, all right.
But they told us that they weren't gonna be disposing of that fill to anyone else other than their own use, so.
Yeah, that they were gonna stockpile it for their own use.
Correct, so, if, if that's not occurring, then
That's bad.
that's not being very truthful.
Well, it's all of your agreements for the solar field.
That's right.
Well, it didn't say whether their property was in another town.
Well, we asked that question. We did, remember?
Yeah.
They said it was in the forest and some minor roads and that is it.
They sa- that's what they said.
And, and the thing is, there, there's tractor trailers falling out of your property. It's, it's been like after the last six years. Charlotte Princess Road is the same thing, that solar field. They had that big mountain of sand, it was a problem, and all of a sudden it disappeared.
Put that back.
You want a copy? Make your copy, leave it for others.
So, those three they cited are really minor.
Well, they said they've all been, if you read it, it says most of them are unresolved.
Yeah, you open the door for some.
They're just concerned about the, I believe, when Miles was in place, that they were doing due diligence.
Well, I know previously Ted was issued a twenty-seven page document of shortcomings in his
Hmm.
awarding permits in flood zones.
Yeah.
And the same day he received it, he gave somebody permission to rebuild that house on the beach.
Is that the one we got twenty or thirty thousand dollar file at that time, huh?
Hmm. Well?
But this flood, these flood maps are impacting sales in the town of Wayham like
Oh, yeah.
nobody's business.
Were him, Kate, topping down Buzz's bed.
People that didn't think they were remotely affected by flood zones, all of a sudden.
In a new flood zone?
Well, it's put a, it's put a lot of property and some people that are old, that really don't wanna deal with it and want to sell, it's, it's knocked the value of homes away now. Average home price of water is really dropped.
I saw one.
Are you up to high, you're up to three?
I saw one on Zillow that-
Two feet.
Five, two feet?
They walked away halfway through a renovation, they walked away from the house.
Yeah.
In town?
Yeah.
And gave it to the bank?
It's on the market, but it's, it says halfway through a renovation, a two-thirds, well, I don't know what the reason for walking away at this point, it may be something else, but.
Jeez. It's not good.
Wasn't one of the first time.
I heard that the state was gonna review those maps though and, and make a recommendation to change quite a few of them back to the way they were. Is that not still occurring?
No, they went ahead and did the first set, and they went and revised them. The Wayham system revised and that's it. There's a couple other sets they have to go.
Mm-hmm.
And all they did was postpone the full in Acton, but they delayed the flood.
Yeah, but-
Within four years, they were good.
Some way he went to Ireland or, or went to-
Ooh, what?
Some way the governor went to, yeah, to, to view the flood, flood maps.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's where we should be.
I don't know where he found it before I tell you. Point probably be drawn soon.
You can't win with it either, because they're appliances on, on the table.
Well, well, I know, we should get more terrorists down those.
The problem is, is that people that have a mortgage, they lose that stuff.
Well, the misinformation that came along with it.
Because the bank's gonna require it.
Anybody that has the power to build a house-
Anybody was following that.
Right.
To maintain the house is screwed.
Right.
So, but, it's all there.
Right.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Any objection to that?
Ooh, just starting to have fun.
Sir, a second.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned eight oh two, looks like, Bob.
No overtime, Bob.